So I think.
The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
Diane, not Diana, Santa Bria, to come around the bar here.
Yes.
Yep, right at that table.
Chairs with arms.
Yay!
Yay!
I want to welcome both of you here this evening. My name is Pauline Cormier. I am the Ward Two Counselor and the Chair of the Wees and Means Committee. And the other members of my committee are Counselor Ardinger, sitting to my left, and Counselor Deacon, directly across from me. These are interviews that were scheduled, and this is from, and I'll read it officially, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Mary Marata to the Historical Commission term to expire April 15, 2025. Ms. Sanabria, your interview is scheduled for a few minutes afterwards, but welcome to both of you. And I'll start with you, Ms. Marata. Welcome.
Thank you.
And just want to give you the opportunity to introduce yourself.
Sure. Okay, so my name's Mary Marata. I've been working for about six years with the Lemonster Historical Society, volunteering and am member of the Board. And in the last few years, I've had a lot of interactions with the Commission as well. They're very helpful when I have questions from people. So I answer questions at the Historical Society. People send them through the phone and emails and chats, and I look up information and I find artifacts. And sometimes I have visitors to the Society, and we show them around the museum. And it's been very satisfying for me. I'm retired now, so I can spend my time the way I want. And I found that the Commission also has great teamwork and a lot of overlapping knowledge and a different kind of approach to things. And I'm really happy to be able to work with the people on the Commission a little bit now and then, too. So that led me to them asking me to be part of the Commission.
And can you tell us how the, what's the difference between the Historical Society and the Historical Commission?
Well, a lot of people ask that. Because a lot of people call the Society when they mean to be asking for the Commission. Other people, not really sure. And it's a good question. The Society has been around for 100 years, and it's more of a private organization with people who are, have always been interested in the history of Lemonster and in preserving it and publishing information about it. The Commission, on the other hand, is really part of the city, and it reports to the city. And so the city can ask the Commission to do historical things, historical research, or to establish historical places. So the Society is independent of the city, and the Commission is really an important part of the city and the planning and the city council.
Okay. And you said you've been with the Historical Society for six years?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything in particular that you hope to get done or see in the future?
I would, I would love to be able to take as much leadership role as I can to help both of the Society and the Commission. Are few in members now, and moving into the new generation with computers and stuff. I also worked at Digital Equipment Corporation for 30 years. I was a technical writer. So I come from a background of investigation, research, and also technical capabilities and understanding how that can help us do a better job, both at the Commission and at the Society. So that's what I hope to be able to do.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to open this up if there's any other questions. Counselor Ardinger? Counselor Deacon?
No, I just thought, I thank you for your service. And it's so important in any city, but our city, to have people that support the history. And there's a story behind it. So I wish you luck, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the Council? Counselor Bedanza?
Yeah. First of all, I should disclose that I am trustee at the Historical Society and have worked for a number of years with both of tonight's confirmations and know them well from those interactions. And it has always been a source of confusion in Lemonster, with those communities that have both a Commission and a Society. In some places, they have one or the other, but not both. The newspaper was forever getting that wrong, probably still would today. And the Society, as Mary suggested, has been around for 116 years. It's a private nonprofit. Was actually an outgrowth of a city, of the library, back in the 1880s. Some civic-minded people got together and started the public museum at the Lemonster Library, and the Lemonster Historical Society was an outgrowth of that. We are both, organizations are sort of in need of volunteers. So if someone's out there watching and they want to, they're a history buff or they want to get involved, please consider doing some volunteer work at either organization. I'm sure both the Commission and the Society would love to have some more people onboard. It's just the nature of the beast right now. I think each of the organizations is sort of really needy of people that want to be involved. And I, you know, Mary, I thank you for your interest and all the effort that you've given to the Society. I hope you'll continue with that. And I know that you'll do a good job and continue your work at the Commission as well. And thank you again for that.
You're welcome.
Any other members? Counselor Frida?
We've had great success over the years in our boards and commissions and Historical Society and Historical Commission, both. We've been very lucky. We've had people that are really into the city and really are proud of their city. Some communities don't have that. They just have somebody who serves on a board, doesn't show up half the time. So we're very lucky to have somebody like you that wants to step up to the plate, that is almost already there and wants to continue. Because we've had, you know, so many successful people and good people that have served over the years. So, you know, to have that continuation is important, and it looks like we'll have that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've been in that, too. Yes.
Any?
Just a quick one. Yep. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you very much. It's, you know, obvious from, you know, what you've said in your demeanor that you are excited about continuing this. And, you know, history is so important. We have such a rich and wonderful history here in Lemonster. And to have good stewards, you know, who are enthusiastic, who really love the city and love history, it's just so important. So, thank you so much. I see Mr. Lapointe, I can't, you know, not mention, not let him, you know, not get mentioned because I've been to the Historical Commission on several occasions, and people there have been very, very hopeful. So, thank you again for stepping up to serve.
Thank you.
Any other members of the Council? Seeing none, at this point, Mary, I'm going to declare your interview over, and I'll have you just sit for a few minutes. And it's Diane Sanabria?
Sanabria.
Excellent. I think we asked some of the more hardcore questions of Ms. Marata, so we got some of these, some of these definitions out of the way, anyway. But, please, if you'd take a few minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the Historical Commission.
I am actually the Historical and Genealogical Coordinator now at the Lemonster Public Library. When Janine Levesque retired in May of 2019, I took over in her position. And at least once or twice a week, I have to pinch myself and go, hey, you do this. I absolutely love what I'm doing now. I worked with teenagers for 40 years at the library, and I enjoyed every second of it. But it's really nice to be in a room full of things older than me. For change, so. So I'm having a blast over there. And I, as part of my work at the library, I often help the Commission if they are looking for something. Or, you know, that's one of the things I think I wanted to touch on tonight, was the fact that all of us share such a love of the history of this community. We all know each other. We're all friends. We're colleagues. We are always there to help each other out. It maybe wasn't always that way, you know, years and years and years and years ago. But I think now this is something that is a credit to the people in this community who volunteer for these organizations. And I was actually looking at, on the hot drive today, for something completely unrelated, but I came across some information at the library about something called Ford History, the partnership that when we moved back into our new beautiful building in 2007, the idea was floated that the four entities that are very much concerned with Lemonster's history should maybe join together formally, form a partnership. Nothing ever really came of it as a formal organization, but the idea that the Commission, the Society, the library, and LTV are all members of this group of people who really deeply care about this community. And, you know, as you said, Sue, we've got such a rich history here. It is absolutely amazing to me. I don't know if it's in the water or the air or what it is in this community that produces the kind of creative talents, sporting talents, you know, people in legislative capabilities, all sorts of people in this community that have just, you know, are nationally known, internationally known in some cases. So it's amazing, you know, to really kind of promote that, you know, let kids know that history is not this static, dead thing, that, you know, these people are boring and anything but that, you know? And I think all of us really feel compelled to share that, you know, and work together. So I, you know, I don't think there's any issue with the fact that we both volunteer for the Society, but the fact that we're now, you know, going to step up and help the Commission as much as we can, all of us working together, I think, is a really important part of this. So, I became interested, I actually became part of the Historical Society back in my, probably my late twenties. I would have to go back and try to really figure that out, but it was, I don't know if any of you remember Dr. Rossi, but his wife, Evangeline, worked for the library for a long time. And Van, Van was one of those people that would look at me and say, you know, we have all this stuff on Buckskin Sam. And I'd be like, this Buckskin Sam? And someone should put it all together, you know, looking at you. Someone, meaning you. Van would always do that and pass things on and say, gee, look at this. This is so neat. This is so cool. But she was one of the ones that kind of said, you should get involved over there simply because they need younger people to get involved and be excited about it and carry on the tradition. Because, let's face it, she said, people my age, if we're involved in it, we're going to be gone at some point. And unless you get younger people involved, the Society's going to go with us, you know? And that's, so you should, you should go over there and see what you can do and get involved. And that's kind of how, you know, how I became, I remember actually Veronica Russell saying, well, you know, after I made this impassioned speech, you know, on behalf of Van about getting younger people involved, and she said, well, we have some positions on the board. How about you? And I went, oh, I think, I think I meant other younger people, but, okay, fine. Here I am, in profanity and profound. So I've been involved with them for a long time as well, doing programs and, you know, done some things with LTV, you know, on TV. Actually, my dad was notorious for not sleeping, digressing. And he says, one morning, he says to me, oh, it's 3 o'clock in the morning, and there's nothing on TV, and I'm flipping around, and there you are. So I watched you talking about Buckskin Sam. I'm glad I entertained you at 3 o'clock in the morning, yeah. But, yeah, you know, there's just been some wonderful initiatives undertaken by all of these four organizations, and I really want to see you keep going. So, I thank you for your faith in me and your nomination.
Diane, thank you very much. And I just want to echo what Counselor Shalfo Zephyr said, is your energy is fantastic. And you've brought it here tonight, and I think we, I can speak for everybody when we look forward to what you're going to bring to the Commission. I'm just going to open it up if any other counselors have any questions.
I just wanted to comment, I don't think I've ever seen as much enthusiasm sitting at that table. It's just amazing. And I know Mr. Lapointe is a pain in the neck to work with, but I think you've got to, you know, keep him in line, so. Yeah, good. All right. Thank you very much for volunteering.
Yeah, Mary, this summer, actually, I remember I called and said, did you know that, which was, which was the plastic company, New England Novelty?
Yes, yes.
Made jewelry for a star in the '30s. She designed her own jewelry, and they made the jewelry. And she was like, I didn't, but let's see what we can find. So that's a forthcoming, that's going to be in the display.
So who is Buckskin Sam, by the way?
Buckskin Sam, Major Samuel Stone Hall. He was, he wrote many, many dime novels, which were kind of the comic books of the 1870s, 1880s. He was, well, Hall Street is, his family owned a huge farm and an orchard in that area. And, but, the life of a climber was not for us, Sam. And he became a Texas Ranger, actually. He left home very young and became a Texas Ranger and had all sorts of escapades, ended up knowing Buffalo Bill Cody, who said to him, you know, you've lived the life that other people are sitting in their chairs writing about. You should write some of these novels. And we actually have a couple of them at the library because Florence Wheeler, my personal hero, was our, who was the library for almost 50 years, realized back in the '30s that, you know, we should have some of these dime novels. This is kind of cool. This guy was really something in his day. And she managed to buy, I think we have three of them. They're encased, they're encapsulated now. They're too fragile to be actually looked at, but we made copies of the pages before we did that, so they can actually read. It's quite the lurid prose, I must say. But, yeah, he was from Lemonster. You know? We just found information about another guy who wrote westerns, pub westerns in the '20s and the '30s. We had one of them, and it was like, who is this guy? And Janine always said, I never had time to research him. Robert Russell Strang. Yeah. It was like, yeah, yeah. And then I'm finding a ton of information about him.
I think you're going to come up there and get history lessons from me.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'm being here tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Deacon?
Two thumbs up.
Thanks so much.
Are there any other members of the Council? Counselor Bedanza?
Good evening, Diane. Diane and I have been working together at the Society probably almost two decades now. And I can tell you that, you know, it's not just enthusiasm, there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of hard work, and enjoy tremendously collaborating with Diane. And actually, we, a little few months ago, we were talking about the collaboration between Florence Wheeler and Fannie Gates, who was a, Florence Wheeler being one of Lemonster's librarians, and Fannie Gates being a member of the Historical Society, and how they collaborated on the story of the Johnny Appleseed's genealogy, which is a whole interesting story unto itself. We've benefited greatly, and I hope we'll continue to benefit from your interest and zeal at the Society and I'm sure the Commission, Mr. Lapointe and Mr. Kerrigan, sitting behind you, getting another wonderful person to help out over there and what you do at the library now. You had a big set of shoes to fill in Janine Levesque, and I'm happy to report that Diane's doing a great job in filling those shoes. So, thank you.
Any other members of the Council? Counselor Frida?
I don't think I have to say that Diane will bring a ton of excitement to her job. I think you've done that on everything you've ever done. So, you know, it, and that, that's an important part of it as well. There's a track record of people writing books that, that come out and looking at the gentleman behind you as well and over here. So you might be writing books before you're done, one or both, or a collaborative effort of the two of you and everything you put together. So, thank you, you know, putting your time in, again. You know, you had so many years at the library and did so much with so many kids, that it's important to have that same connection to kids with history. They need to see that, and they need to hear it, and they need to know that people care about it. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. I think people in the community, and I hope, you know, people that are here are watching, you know, will understand the tremendous resource that you are at the library. You know, it's nice that Vocation, you know, and your interest in history actually, you know, ended up dovetailing into this opportunity when Janine left. So I know all the work that you do, and people out in the community who don't know what a great resource Diane is, they should get in touch. Because people contact you from all over the country.
I just had an email from Indiana this morning for somebody who needed a Pittsburgh city directories, which we do have, and she was looking for somebody, a relative that worked for Pittsburgh, I forget which paper company it was. I was able to find him in one of the directories, so at least it gave her something to go on. But I said, it looks like he lived in Lunenburg, so that's why he's not mentioned in previous, in the forthcoming directories. And then he moved back to California, he died in '79. But at least gave her something. But, oh, yeah, that lady was from Michigan or Missouri or wherever she contacted us from, you know, about this, do you have any catalogs with New England Novelty? And I'm like, no catalogs, but why are you asking? And then I started doing digging, and it was like, you gotta be kidding me. And this woman's jewelry, I mean, Andy Warhol collected her stuff back in the '70s, and it's worth thousands and thousands of dollars now. Stuff that you could buy for a buck. You know, a pin for a dollar, you know, a necklace for five bucks is now, you know, $20,000 just out of the stuff. It's just so cool.
It is.
Really? And New England Novelty made this stuff? Yeah. What did it do?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you, both of you ladies, for your energy and your openness and your willingness to serve. I will ask the President if we can move up the vote on this a little bit earlier in the, in the meeting tonight. But I thank, I thank you both for coming in, and I'm sure we're going to be, it'll be a fairly quick vote on this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, and we have a 6:30 hearing, Legal Affairs.
4822, this is a continuation of public hearing. In order to revise the fee schedule, I think we're all familiar with this. Unfortunately, we have referrals that are still out. I spoke with the clerk earlier today just to make sure that they had arrived without my knowledge, but unfortunately, we're still waiting. So I'm probably going to end up recommending further time on this, but before I do, let's see, I have a letter that I'd like to read into the record. I actually have two. The most recent one is from Ms. Wood. Dated May 6th. Our city council petition 48-22 to revise the fee schedule in the city of Lemonster to begin July 1, 2022. Dear Caitlin, on 5/2/2022, the planning board voted 6 to 0 to approve a fee increase for all special permits from $200 to $250, including all advertising fees, to be effective July 1, 2022. Please relay this information to the city council, and please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. Regards, Elizabeth Woods, AICP Planning and Development Director. So once again, I think due to the fact that we're waiting on these referrals, I'm going to ask for further time, but let's get the chairman to defer to other members of my committee. And with Counselor Bedanza?
I understand that we're waiting patiently for a couple of referrals, so I'm okay with continuing the public hearing and giving it further time.
And third member, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yeah, I would agree with further time as well.
Well, thank you very much. Have any questions or comments from members of the Council? Hearing done, let me go to the public. Is there anyone in the public in attendance this evening who would like to comment either in favor of or in opposition to petition 4822? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening who would like to comment petition 4822? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to comment, speak on behalf of or in opposition to petition 48-22? Hearing done. We will keep the public hearing open and ask for a little bit later.
I would recommend June 13 at 6:50 because our agenda is full with budget information for the 23rd.
June 13 at 6:15?
I said 6:50, but I don't know how much time you would, feels better. We have nothing on June as of right now.
So 6, I'm sorry, 6?
6:50.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right, so we will continue the public hearing to June 13, 2022 at 6:50 PM. We have a 6:50. Right on time. All right. Perfect. It's good. You all right? Good. Do you want me to proceed, Mr. President?
Sure thing.
I was waiting for your cue. Okay. 49-22, Elizabeth Woods, on behalf of the planning board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the solar ordinance, Article 3, Table of Uses, in Section 22-104 of zoning, per attached letter. Again, this is a continued public hearing and I see a trend developing. We still have referrals out on this as well. Same applies, I know Ms. Wood is in attendance. Would you, would you like to comment on this? And I might add, I know the fact that we have a new conservation agent coming on board, so I'm not sure how that, how long it's going to take to get a referral back from Collins College. So maybe a clerk will keep me posted if she hears anything. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Is this on?
Yes. Now it is. I just want to say, at this point, the planning board is very pleased with the document that's before you. If you recall, it originally came in front of the council in 2020 and I believe it was tabled. Since that time, the planning board has had to set up a subcommittee with Counselor Peter Angelini and Pat Perla from the planning board, and we've worked out some of the differences that I believe the council had concerns about. And then the planning, it went back to the planning board and the planning board accepted those changes, as well as recommendations from the conservation agent, our late conservation agent, Angela Schofield. So those all went into the draft that you have in front of you today and the planning board has no further concerns. I have no further concerns. There, there might be a few typos. I know, as I was sitting here, I was looking through it. The planning board did catch one. Section 3F applicability, under applicability, the word B should, the letter B should be B. And then, as I said before, the conservation agent had given us some comments. And on page three, section, it's hard to follow, but it's 4G, letter I, I2. There's a comment from the conservation agent that needs to be deleted because she has suggested that you put visual and habitat mitigation plan as one of the requirements. And then she put in parentheses, not sure if this would be needed, but I think this would be a good requirement that can be waived if need be. That was one of her comments, so that needs to be pulled out. And there's one place where it says town, where it should say city. Like a lot of our ordinances, we did borrow from other municipalities when we made this and that's an oversight, so we should definitely change that to city. But other than that, we're happy with the draft that's before you and if you have other suggestions, I'm happy to take them back to the planning board.
Well, if I may, Ms. Wood, I also noted on the second page, I sent, I've made a couple edits over the weekend and I sent them out to the council this morning via a few clerks. So on page two, under general, on the second sentence, stamped by a PE, I would like to have that spelled out, professional engineer.
Okay.
And again, two, I think you just brought it up, in that same category, general, item two, which in parentheses, after visual and habitat mitigation plan, was striking that. So I think you brought that up, to you referring to earlier. And that same typo. Oops, sorry about that. And then, since these pages aren't numbered, I believe it's page four, and you'll see it highlighted in yellow in the second paragraph. Again, that last line, necessary permit should be acquired before construction begins. I'd like to strike that and, and copies provided to the city. I mean, we certainly have, it's mentioned several times earlier in the draft, you need a building permit, need a...
So strike the entire underline?
Well, starting with the word necessary permits.
Yes, strike that sentence.
Yes. That would be my, my recommendation.
Ms. Wood, if you want, I can email you that, too. I have it digitally with the edits.
So again, I think it's important to note that Chapter 40A, Section 3, makes it perfectly clear that except where, you can't prohibit solar unless it's in the interest of public safety, public health, or public welfare. So I think that's what led us to include, under applicability, item E, prohibited in the water supply protection district. I mean, generally, if you're going to do ground mounted solar, you have to, you have to remove all vegetation and you have to move vegetation that's adjacent to the solar panels to prohibit any shading that may occur. So obviously, in the water supply protection district, you want to maintain as much of that natural growth as possible. So I think we're on solid ground there and I'm glad that you joined us this evening to sort of, perhaps you could go over the, the history of this. I know we, it was before the council and it was tabled. Then we gave it leave to a jar and we submitted this new, this new petition. It has obviously the full support of the planning board.
You want the history? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, just the general...
I'm looking through my file here. I don't...
And only because we have a couple of new, new members here.
Yeah, I'm looking through my file and it looks like we began working on this in January of 2020 with the planning board and continued to work on it for several months. I can probably tell you the first time it went to petition with city council, I think it was...
Oh, actually.
Well, this is a new petition because we had, the original petition was, okay, it looks like it was November 23rd, 2020, and the council saw it again on December 14th, 2020, December 28th, 2020, January 11th, 2021, January 25th, 2021. There was a public hearing on January 11th, 2021. That was continued until February 8th, 2021. Continued again to March 8th, 2021. Given further time. And then, that's the end of the notes here. I know that at a certain point, it was, the original petition was, was withdrawn and we submitted a new petition with all of the edits and that's what you have before you tonight.
Yes, it was given regular course on 3/28, so that was the first time, it was before us, the new petition, revised petition.
Okay.
All right, good. I just know it's been kicking around a long time and we've had...
It's been around a lot and it's been through a lot of drafts.
Couple of new members, I just wanted to give them an idea of how long we've been, we've been moving this thing around.
We've had, we've had some application come forwards in planning board, so this, this does, this would impact. We don't have anything today, but in the past, over the time that this has been discussed, we've had some solar applications come through. So we'd like to see it pass so that we can implement it.
I can assure you that I'd like to see it pass as well and move on. So hopefully, we can get these referrals and ask Madam Clerk if she'd be so kind as to notify those folks that are, have yet to provide us with a referral?
Yep, we got one in from DPW, so that one's all set as of late on Friday. I will remind Fire, Board of Appeals, conservation we have previously. Is that sufficient or do you want the new agent to?
If we could get one from Collins, if it's going to be too much of a problem...
The new agent isn't starting until... Yeah, May 23rd.
All right. I don't know...
And then he's going to have a full plate.
Yeah.
I know when he comes in.
If I could, I'm just going to stop you right there. We got to start the meeting, it's seven o'clock, so, and we'll come back to this. So at this point, I'm going to call the meeting to order, the Leamester City Council for May 9th, 2022. Please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Leamester City Council, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Arndinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Schelfer Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
I am present. All nine members are present. Does Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have reviewed the, the minutes of the April 25th, 2022 meeting. I find them to be in good order and I ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will place the minutes of April 25th, 2022 on file. Seeing none, that is all set and I will ask at this point for a motion for a recess. Counselor Cormier, I saw your hand first. Counselor Angelini, do you want a second? I think I saw you go up second.
I did.
Okay, all those in favor of entering into a recess signify unusual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, we now stand in recess. And would the Chairman of Legal Affairs continue with this hearing?
Well, let me go to members of my committee. I saw Counselor Badanza's hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This thing's been kicking around for a long time and the conservation commission's already had a, had a crack at it. I know we're getting a new agent, but they've substantially contributed to the current draft and, and, you know, the Board of Appeals hasn't weighed in. I typically would wait, but I think we're at the point where the planning board was the impetus for this. Planning board worked hard on it. Planning board's before us tonight. Planning board wants to get it passed. If it doesn't offend anybody too much, I'd like to see this thing move ahead tonight, to be honest with you.
That's fine with me, Counselor. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I, I would second that. I, I think it's time to move it along. I think that enough work has been done in this and waiting on a new conservation, you know, somebody new to the, to this, at this point, is just going to slow this down and drag it out even further. So I'd be willing to, to see it move along tonight as well.
That's terrific, thank you. Before I go to the rest of the council, let me just read this letter into the record real quick and then I'll go to members of the council. It's dated May 5th, 2022. It's from Raymond Racine, DPW Director. Regarding petition 49-22, Dear Caitlin, Leamester Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the solar ordinance and offers the following comments. The DPW approves the petition as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, DPW Director. Counselor Frida, I saw your hand up.
Actually, my comments were directly related to the letter from the DPW. I don't know when the subcommittee was planned, was put together, but I do know that what you just read from Ray Racine dated today, says that the DPW approves the petition as submitted. So they looked at a petition before it was changed, before some of the amendments being proposed are in there, some of the draft that's been put together. So they looked at something completely different than, than what they agreed approving the petition as submitted. Did they look at, at the one with all the changes?
So I actually re-forwarded the most recent one to them on Friday and reminded them that it was outstanding and that's what they used to provide us with that because they were still outstanding on the referral.
So they got a request to do the first one, the first draft, and then you gave them the second draft?
Yep, I updated the draft on Friday.
That was changed?
Yes, I sent it to Ray.
For climate, before we even had a discussion about it?
No, I didn't have Mr. Angelini, ah, Counselor Angelini's pieces of it yet, just the one that was from Elizabeth that had the original red line pieces. That was proposed to us here after it went to planning and came back. So that original's a middle from when it came in, in March.
Yeah, so the, the only difference would be the, the change to the, adding E to the word B, spelling out instead of using PE, professional engineer, and striking that one sentence in parentheses.
And then making town, city.
And then making town, city, yeah. And that...
They're not substantial comments. Changes, substantial changes. Yeah, they didn't see the red line version from Counselor Angelini, but they saw the one that Elizabeth originally did, which is this one minus Counselor Angelini's writing on it.
You've got to remember, too, that the original, original was tabled and scuttled. So this...
I remember that, yeah. Counselor Nibroski did it.
Right.
Couple of years, yeah. But I just, I don't know.
Yeah, so essentially, it's exactly the same thing you're looking at minus right written marks from Counselor Angelini from today.
Okay, I'm, I still have my doubts on it, but go ahead.
Counselor Zephyr?
Yeah, I have some questions. So the, the solar ordinance dated 3/10/2022, the joint subcommittee draft, the joint subcommittee, I guess Ms. Wood referred to in her cover letter, which she indicates is Counselor Angelini, planning board member Pat Perla and herself. Is that right?
Well, actually, I wouldn't refer to it as a subcommittee. They asked me to participate in a phone call to go, to go over what was currently on the table and made some suggestions to change, to make some edits to it. And they're incorporated and that's the document that we submitted to the, this is the same document that the council has in front of them.
Right. So the, there are additions and edits. Some are in blue, most are in red. There are, most of them are in red, yeah.
You're referring to March 21st, 2022.
This says 3/10/22, the thing that I just got today.
Oh, okay.
That Counselor Angelini, I guess, forwarded to the clerk who forwarded it to us.
All right.
Yeah, it says solar ordinance 3/10/2022, joint subcommittee draft. And there are lots, numerous, numerous, I haven't counted them, but there are numerous edits to the document. Most are in red, several are in blue. There are a couple of strikeouts made by the counselor. And then there are some yellow areas that are highlighted.
The yellow highlighted areas are the conservation agents.
So yellow is conservation agent. And then how about the blue?
The, the blue and the changes that were made during that conference call?
They're track changes. The red and blue are, I, I can't say, maybe when we went back between computers, it changed colors, but there, there are edits that were made at that time, the same time.
So we don't know in terms of attributing any of the changes to...
They were all, all of the changes... All of the changes that came, the board, the planning board was content with the draft as it was. All the changes that came as, as a result of that meeting with Pat Perla and Counselor Angelini and myself, minus the conservation agent's comments, were from Counselor Angelini. We sat down and he had a list of items that he had recommended changing and they came from him. And, and they were integrated into the draft because at that point, we were, we were open ears to what the counselor was saying. And then it went back to the planning board after that to review those edits and the planning board accepted.
So, all of the edits in this document, the blue ones and the red ones, are updates that resulted from a meeting of, I'm just trying to get, what I'm, what I'm confused about is the process.
This is confusing, I agree with you, because this is, after the conference call, this is a document that, that the planning director gave me.
Yep.
I asked the following day or a couple of days later for an electronic version, if you recall, and through the clerk and...
Yep.
Right, you couldn't, you couldn't find it or...
The electronic version?
Yeah.
No... No, I think what you, I think what you, I was confused as to what you were asking me for because I thought you were asking me for attract changes from the original ordinance to the current ordinance. And to make that, they were so different that it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense. So I couldn't provide that.
Just a question. The document that we received initially without the red and blue marks on it, that document and the one with the changes on it are essentially the same thing, except for minor scribners errors, right?
Yes.
Like B and, you know, town versus city.
At this point, yes.
There was nothing substantial changed with the red and blue document from what we had in our packet, you know, on Friday.
I'm trying to follow the chain of events. Give me a date of the, what draft you're looking at.
I'm just trying to, you know. In our packet we received on Friday, dated March 24th, 2022.
March 24th?
Fourth, 2022.
So that came from the clerk?
From the clerk.
Not from me?
No, that came from the clerk. That was what we were given as the ordinance that we were going to be working on tonight.
March 24th, that might be the, is that, that might be from the petition that I submitted?
Yes.
The draft from the petition?
I think what I'm saying is that this document and what the document that Peter Angelini sent out today seem to be essentially the same document.
It should be the same, except for the scribblers errors, yes, correct.
Okay, so it's not, it should not be a major
No.
point of contention, right?
Should not.
Should not. Would you agree, Angel, Counselor?
I would. And I would also say, again, what's in blue are the changes that the Planning Board incorporated from our discussion and what I thought may be something that might improve the document. So we had a conversation. That's why, and you were tracking those changes. And I knew this was going to get rather confusing. And that's why I've been trying.
It's been going on for so long, it's hard to.
Exactly. And then there was, you know, we had the red, the blue, and then, of course, we spoke to the conservation agent after.
And then we, after that, after that meeting, we then sent it to the conservation agent for comment. And then she added her, the late conservation, she added her comments in. And then after that, it was sent back to the, I think, I think I shared it with you. I believe I shared it with you after the conservation agent.
Yes, but I, but I'd been, I tried, we were always trying to get, we were working with the clerk to try to get something that was easier to follow.
Yes.
Because it was hard to track what had been done from the original document.
Yeah. It's hard to do that because the original, when you say original, are we talking original from two years ago? Yeah, that one was too, that was too muddled to produce. Yeah.
So.
It might be helpful to suggest what this does. Instead of just talking about, I mean, the substance of this document is it allows ground-mounted solar in the Village District, which previously it did not allow. It prohibits ground-mounted solar in the Water Protection Supply District. So Ms. Wood, am I correct so far?
Yeah, correct, yes.
All right. The rest of it is slight tweaks to the original ordinance, making a few things clear and a few things, for the most part, more restrictive. Spelling out that you need a professional engineered plan, things of that nature. Other than that, that's all this thing does.
And we did layer on top of it more restrictive or more requirements for commercial development versus a homeowner's.
Correct.
So that was, that was the main piece that the Planning Board had wanted
Right.
from the beginning. The stricter, the more, the more layered requirements for commercial development.
That's why I suggest, I think it's time to move forward.
I agree with Counselor Badanza, but just a quick question. If we, you have petitions or permits already, people that really want to do this already, right? They're waiting for this?
Some have come through while this has been discussed, but I don't have any, today I don't have any active applications.
So how did you handle the ones that came through?
I had to go by the previous ordinance.
Previous ordinance, okay.
What's in the books and what's, yeah.
So getting this on the books is.
It's key because
Key, yeah, exactly.
we do get, we do get applications in.
Okay, I just want to clarify that we need to get this on the book.
That's a great point, because the last thing we need is someone applying to put one of these in a significant commercial application in the Water Protection Supply District would not be in the interest of the city of Lemister, in my opinion.
Counselor Zephyr.
Yep, thank you very much. You know, I appreciate the summary and, you know, certainly everybody wants to make sure that, you know, some people don't make unsightly or, you know, any other kind of, you know, solar ray on the ground that would impact the neighborhood in an adverse fashion. But the changes are not insignificant. And when you're talking about changes that, you know, not only apply to neighborhoods, but apply to commercial projects, the fact that we haven't had a legal affairs subcommittee meeting, I mean, did you have one and I just missed it? This is significant and substantial change to the ordinance.
We weigh in on it now.
I'm trying to.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, it, but the, did Counselor Cormier, Pauline Cormier, did you have a chance to discuss or review this and understand all of the changes? I mean, have you had a chance to weigh in on this?
To weigh in on it? No, that's, this is my opportunity this evening. I have reviewed the documentation. And just to clarify, this document that has the reds and the blues and everything else, these are not pending changes. These are already in the ordinance that we have in front of us.
Correct.
Except for, except for a couple of typos. So none of these are pending. They're already in, except for a couple of typos and changing that. So yes, I have been able to, to review this and understand it. Have I had a formal meeting? No.
Just so you remind everybody, this was in your packet March 28th. This, the same document, without the P change, without the E to B, without.
The scribblers errors.
Right.
So this, March 28th, this was in everybody's packet, the way it is, without a couple of pencil changes. So, I mean, everybody sat ample, in my opinion, from, you've had entire month of April to probably six, close to six weeks. So it's not like, you know, we're trying to pull a fast one or something. But feel free to, if you have a problem with it, you'd like to see something changed, bring it up. We'll debate it. That's the purpose of what we're here for.
Well, that's really the subcommittee purpose. I mean, and that's why we have subcommittees to evaluate, discuss, and review in detail this kind of thing. I mean, that's, I was just completely confused by the process because I was expecting that kind of substantial change to an ordinance, that we would have a separate subcommittee meeting and be able to look at it and talk about it and, you know, kick it around more. And so I was just surprised. And the track changes, they probably are incorporated into this document, but it's not, it's not obvious. You know, you just read through the document. I mean, it's a long, involved ordinance. So seeing the changes, I mean, you know, I would argue that they're substantial, that we should have had a more public process. I'm just confused as to why the process has changed. Because that's not the way we've done business in the past.
Like I said, I don't really see.
There's a point of order here. This should not be debated during a public hearing. And we're into a debate here? This should be part of the council meeting, not public hearing.
If there's no one else in the council that has any questions, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the public this evening that would like to comment on petition 49-22? For the second time, is there anyone in the public this evening would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 49-22? For the third and final time, is there anyone this evening that would like to speak on behalf of or in opposition to petition 49-22? Hearing none? I will, well, before I close the public hearing, let me go back to members of my committee one more time. In light of the recent debate, your positions remain the same?
I'm fine with closing the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm agreed.
All right. Our recommendation would be to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's it for public hearings. We just have the public forum. We are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. There are two people that have signed up to speak. The first one is Pat LaPointe. Please step to the microphone and formally state your name and address for the record.
Patrick LaPointe, 39 Carolyn Street, Lemister, Mass. I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission, so you probably know why I'm here. I just want to say, I want to thank the council for the terrific questions they asked these two wonderful ladies. And this is, I've been in these chambers many, many hours. This is the first time I ever wanted to applaud a couple of people. They were just terrific. And now you can see why I'm here to ask you, please, confirm these two appointments. You probably aren't aware that, well, you're aware that we lost our chairman a little over a year ago. But we've also recently lost Chet Carter. Chet Carter has some health issues, so he can't continue with the commission. Also, John Proetti, the most interesting man I know. He can't continue also. So we have, Mike and I have been haunting these women for months and months and months. And I was relieved that they were both here tonight. And I'm very pleased that you are going to consider them for the serving on the Historical Commission. And I, please, please vote for them.
Thank you very much. Next is Michael Carrigan. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Mike Carrigan, 165 Summerton Street in Lunenburg. Just wanted you, I'd like to, hopefully that you'll vote for Diane and Mary. They're two very valuable assets to our community. And I've been working with them for quite some time. And it's always been a pleasure working with them. Especially Mary is tech savvy and Diane has been with the library and the Historical Society. And I think all the knowledge and experience that these two girls bring is going to be a very big asset to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is all that has signed up. So I will now ask, in general, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. For the second time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? For the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. And the city council will now be back in session. And we will move right into item number five, which are communications from the mayor, beginning with C-75, Madam Clerk.
C dash, excuse me, C-75, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request an appropriation of $37,000 be made to the snow and ice expense account. The same amount to be transferred from the snow and ice overtime account regarding equipment repairs and restocking of consumables.
And C-75 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
C-75 has been given regular course. C-76?
C-76, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request an appropriation of $900,000 be made to the school transportation expense account. The same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-75 is likewise referred to the Chairman of Finance.
76, right?
C-76, yes.
Yes, again, first time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-76 has been given regular course. C-77?
C-77, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request an appropriation of $450,000 be made to the street resurfacing expense account and $550,000 be made to the sidewalk expense account. The same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-77 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-77 has been given regular course. C-78?
C-78, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the fire department overtime account. The same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account regarding overtime funding for the remainder of the fiscal year.
And C-78 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
C-78 has been given regular course. C-79?
C-79, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request the fiscal year 2023 budget, which totals $150,624,467, be adopted. $150,416,477 to be raised by fiscal year 2023 revenues. $133,000 to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Special Revenue Fund and $75,420 to be transferred from the Cemetery Trust Fund.
C-79 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
This seems like a little, it's interesting. We have two Historical Commission come from these before us this evening because this is historic. I'm going to ask that this be given regular course in May, not June.
C-79 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-80.
C-80, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request a total appropriation of $6,499,451 be made to the fiscal year 2023 water department budget. The same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year 2023 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E.
C-80 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-80 has been given regular course. And the final one, C-81.
C-81, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request a total appropriation of $6,538,048 be made to the fiscal year 2023 sewer department budget. The same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year 2023 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E.
And C-81 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please. And I should suggest at this juncture that a public hearing needs to be set on C-79, C-80, and C-81, all budget items. And I'm suggesting with respect to C-79, do we, do you want to take these in block or you want to take them one at a time?
We can.
I'm going to.
Should we do them one at a time?
Yep.
All right, so I'll suggest C-79 be set for a public hearing on May 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Okay, all those in favor of establishing a public hearing on C-79 for May 23rd at 6:00 PM signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, that public hearing has been established. The one on C-80?
C-80, I'm going to suggest that a public hearing be established for that one on May 23rd at 6:15 PM.
Okay, all those in favor of establishing a public hearing on C-80 for May 23rd at 6:15 PM signify unusual manner. By a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing has been established for C-80, C-81.
And last but not least, C-81, I'm going to request that we establish a public hearing for that communication on May 23rd as well, but this time at 6:30 PM.
Okay, all those in favor of establishing a public hearing for C-81 for May 23rd at 6:30 PM signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-81 has been established for a public hearing.
And I should add as well, Mr. President, that I will be establishing finance subcommittee hearings on May 17th and May 19th, starting at 5:30 PM. In each case, the first evening will be fire, public safety, police, fire, and DPW. And then the following night, the 19th, at 5:30, we'll have library, the school department, and the rec. department coming in on the 19th. You'll get those notices tomorrow, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. And I see on the, I know it's just a helpful note here that you have a two-thirds vote requirement on the, on the budget?
Yes.
Oh, because of the money that's coming out of?
Budgets have a two-third vote.
Are you sure about that?
I checked it with the DOR website and I checked it against our previous.
Good to know. All right, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Frida?
I just can't let it go by without saying, for 29 years, I have sat here, and this is a real credit to the new comptroller because we have never gotten a budget before June, ever. And we usually had it like two weeks before we had the vote on it. So this is the first time, I think I tried a call through, what, May 15th? This will be the first time we get it following the charter. That's a great thing, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, petitions, first time on the agenda, 53-22, Madam Clerk.
53-22, Nellie Molina, on behalf of J. and J. Consignment. Request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 285 Central Street.
And 53-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
53-22 has been given regular course. 54-22?
54-22, Paul Rulo, on behalf of Protech Solutions. Request to renew license to deal second. secondhand articles at 345 Central Street.
And 54-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
54-22 has been given regular course. 55-22?
55-22, Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures, to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Merrim Avenue, place one solely-owned pole numbered T dot 104 S on the east side of Merrim Avenue at a point approximately 163 feet northerly from the center line of Shadow Lawn Drive. Reason, place one solely-owned pole on Merrim Avenue at the request of an abutter to remove a trespass and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables, together with anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Verizon number 1A5F8DP dated February 16th, 2022. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross-arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay. And 55-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means. I'm sorry, the Chairwoman of Public Service, I apologize.
It's a chair.
I'm sorry?
It's right.
For a public, public service? Hold on one moment. This, Counselor Shalfo, I apologize, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Not a problem at all. This should be given regular course, and I also would like to schedule a public hearing on 5/23/22 at 6:45 PM.
Okay, so we're going to now establish a public hearing for May 23rd, 2022 at 6:45 PM. All those in favor of establishing that public hearing signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, that public hearing has been established. I will be abstaining, as usual, this vote involves my employer. I apologize, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. I think the reason for the confusion was we had a few of these last meeting, and you weren't here, and Counselor Frida had to handle them. Counselor Frida, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, through the chair to the chair. Would you also refer this to the DPW?
Absolutely. With referral to the DPW.
With the referral to the DPW, Madam Clerk, on this one as well, for 55-22. You're going to refer to the DPW. Okay, is everybody all set?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to 56-22. Madam Clerk.
56-22, Mason Investments, Inc., renew bowling alley license for Mason Bowling Center located at 640 North Main Street.
Okay. And 56-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
56-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the city council, we will begin with the financial report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year with a budget, a balance, rather, in the stabilization account of $19,904,603. We've appropriated in during the course of the fiscal year, $47,614 in interest, and paid back from our excess and deficiency certification, $3,700,000, leaving a balance of $23,652,216. During the course of the fiscal year through date, including the items that are on for action in tonight's budget, either the first time or before the council, we will have spent $3,843,998, leaving a balance of $19,808,219. And that is the financial report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Any questions or comments on the financial report? Seeing none, I believe we had a request to move up the appointments. There are a couple of people that are very patiently waiting, and we'd like to get them confirmed. So, Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report on those confirmations?
I am, Mr. President. We had Mary Marata, who was our first interview here this evening. And just in gen, I will say that both Mary and Diane were, their interviews went very well. They're both very qualified. They're both very strong in their convictions with helping the city and being active members of both the Historical Society and the Historical Commission. They have rave reviews from the chairperson of the commission, both Mr. LaPointe and Mr. Carrigan. I look forward to having their enthusiasm, and I hope that the enthusiasm they brought here tonight, they'll be able to bring forward in both their positions. So, as to Mary Marata, it would be my position to appoint Ms. Marata to the Historical Commission, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I certainly agree.
Counselor Deacon?
Full support.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the appointment of Mary Marata to the Historical Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yay!
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay!
Counselor Ardinger.
Yay!
Counselor Angelini.
Yay!
Counselor Brady.
Yay!
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay!
Counselor Deacon.
Yay!
Counselor Frida.
Yay!
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Mary Marata has been appointed to the Historical Commission. Congratulations. And Counselor Cormier, Chairman, Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report on the other appointment?
Thank you. Mr. President, again, Ms. Diane Sanabria was in this evening, and all the accolades that we had for Ms. Marata, we have the same ones for Diane as well. I'm happy to support her appointment, and I'd ask you to confirm with members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
Absolutely.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the appointment of Diane Sanabria to the Historical Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will also do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yay!
Counselor Cormier.
Yay!
Counselor Ardinger.
Yay!
Counselor Angelini.
Yay!
Counselor Brady.
Yay!
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay!
Counselor Deacon.
Yay!
Counselor Frida.
Yay!
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Diane Sanabria has been confirmed to the Historical Commission. Congratulations to both of you, and best of luck. We know you'll do very well. Thank you. We will move back to items under Finance, beginning with C-70. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-70, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $39,000 be made to the library operating expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the library personnel account. This comes from a letter dated April 12th, sent over to us by the library director, Alexander Lent. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, on behalf of Lummester Public Library, I am requesting the transfer of $39,000 from the library's personnel accounts. Librarians, $19,000, and part-time library staff, $20,000, to the library's operating account for books. This transfer will fund the library's remaining book purchase through the end of the fiscal year, allowing the library to reach the spending required by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners and the State Aid to Public Libraries program. If you have any questions regarding this request, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your consideration, Alexander Lent. So, some of you may realize that we have a minimum material requirements threshold that we have to meet each year to qualify for state aid from the Mass Board of Library Commission. And what's happening here is there's a surplus in the personnel accounts, and the library director is asking us to use some of that surplus to meet the book purchase threshold. It would be my position to grant C-70 and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-70. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-70 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-70 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I order that the sum of $39,000 be appropriated to the library operating expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the library personnel account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay!
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-71.
C-71, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $217,755 be made to the water debt service principal, the same amount to be transferred from water support services, and this allows the DPW to pay off existing debt before maturity. There's a letter to the comptroller sent by Mr. Fleming dated April 13th, and this really applies to C-71, C-72, C-73, and C-74. So, I'm only going to read it once, because I don't want to put you through that, and I'll explain how these are related. Dear Ms. Reddington, Department of Public Works respectfully request the transfers below in the following water and sewer department expense accounts. Water Department, transfer of $217,755 from water support services to water debt service principal. Transfer of $353,000, and this is C-72, $988 from water capital outlay to water debt service principal. Over on the sewer side, transfer of $112,000, and this is C-73, $112,654 from sewer support services to sewer debt service principal. In C-74, transfer of $118,213 from sewer capital outlay to sewer debt service. So, the idea is these transfers will allow the DPW to pay off existing debt before maturity, giving both departments financial flexibility in fiscal year '23, '24, and '25 for capital improvement projects as well as saving on interest. All transfers will be within the fiscal year '22 water sewer department budgets, so no additional appropriation will be needed. So, the idea here is that we're paying off existing obligations, we're anticipating new obligations for additional capital projects, and the sewer and water departments are trying to avoid an overlap that would put pressure on ratepayers to pay this debt at the same time. They have this surplus money in their, these accounts, support services and capital outlay to be able to do that, and they're asking us to do it. I think it makes good fiscal sense, and of course, the comptroller has supported it. So, my position, Mr. President, with respect to C-71 is to grant it, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-71. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I saw your hand.
Yep, thank you very much. I'm going to recuse myself from C-71 through C-74 due to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay. And Counselor Frida?
I just, I absolutely agree with this. I think it's, it's great that we're able to do this. I would think that we're probably the only community that is able to do it. Many communities are raising their water rates just to be able to take care of things that they need to address through mandates and other things. And I think it's also important to give some credit to Roger Brooks.
Absolutely.
For a number of years as the business manager, and still there, helping Mr. Fleming get into the position. You know, Roger is a former banker and just was on top of everything, from no-interest loans to a lot of the issues over the years that have really helped make the DPW, Water and Sewer Department, successful. So, credit to everyone involved, and I just think it's a great thing that we're able to do this.
It's a great point, Counselor. We've had some excellent management there, as we say, and it looks like Mr. Fleming has taken up the mantle and is doing a great job, too. So, we're fortunate to have them all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on C-71? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-71 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero?
Eight.
I'm sorry, I apologize, eight to zero. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr is abstaining. C-71 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. I order that the sum of $270,755 be appropriated to the water debt service principal, the same amount to be transferred from the water support services. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay!
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-72.
C-72, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $353,988 be made to the water debt service principal, the same amount to be transferred from the water capital outlay. As I indicated in the Mr. Fleming's letter, this is just part and parcel of retiring the rest of the water debt service principal on the existing bonds, and I'd, it's my position to grant C-72, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-72. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-72 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-72 has been granted. Mr. Chairman, do you have an order?
Yes, I do. I order that the sum of $353,988 be appropriated to the water debt service principal, the same amount to be transferred from the water capital outlay. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay!
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-72 has been adopted. The order has been adopted. C-73, Mr. Chairman.
Got to do a little bit of administrative work here. The original letter that came over from Mr. Fleming had a typo and had this, C-73 and C-74, referring to water instead of sewer. Mr. Fleming sent over an amended letter correcting that. So, we're going to need a motion to amend C-73 to, the money's being appropriated to the sewer debt service principal, not the water debt service principal. And same situation with C-74, being appropriated to sewer debt service, not water debt service. So, if I could solicit a motion on that.
Okay, we'll do, this is just the C-73, just, we're taking one at a time?
Sure, we can do that one.
C-73. So, we have a motion. Counselor Cormier?
I move to amend the C-73 by inserting the word sewer instead of the word water, so it would be the sewer department service.
Sewer debt service?
Yes.
Okay. Is we have a second? Counselor Ardinger? All those in favor of the amendment signify unusual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, this has been amended. Mr. Chairman, I'll give this back to you.
Okay, so my report is, C-73, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $112,654 be made to the sewer debt service principal, the same amount be transferred from the sewer support services. Again, similar situation to the, on the water side, this is the sewer side, same, same principle, same concept. Mr. President, I'd be in favor of this, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I agree as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-73 as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-73 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-73 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. I order that the sum of $112,654 be appropriated to the sewer debt service principal, same amount to be transferred from the sewer support services. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay!
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-73, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-74.
Once again, we have a typo, Mr. President, and I'll solicit a motion to delete the word water and insert in its place sewer, sewer debt service principal.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll make that motion to amend.
Okay, Counselor Cormier, is we have a second? Is we have a second? Counselor Ardinger. All those in favor of the amendment of C-74 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-74 has been amended, and I'll give this back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I will now report, C-74, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $118,213 be made to the Sewer Debt Service Principal, same amount to be transferred from the Sewer Capital Outlay. Again, part and parcel of the prior three communications, it'd be my position to grant C-74, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angellini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-74. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-74 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-74 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $118,213 be appropriated to the Water Debt Service Pr, I'm sorry, Sewer Debt Service Principal, same amount to be transferred from the Sewer Capital Outlay, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order on C-74 has been adopted. Moving on to items under legal affairs, beginning with 20-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 20-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. This is a continued public hearing. We've got, we have a public, continued public hearing date to May 23rd, 2022 at 6:50 p.m. So my recommendation would be to continue this until that scheduled public hearing on May 23rd, 2022, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay, so we're going to give this further time, is what your recommendation. And Counselor Badanza?
I'm okay with further time.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to give 20-22 further time, and we do have a hearing that has already been established for May 23rd, 2022 at 6:50 p.m. All those, is there any discussion on giving this further time? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting further time to 20-22 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 20-22 has been given further time. Moving on to 48-22.
Yes, Mr. President. 48-22. Peter Angellini requests to amend the City of Leamester Revisor in Section 12-2 as attached. If you recall, we had a discussion this evening, we were waiting for referrals, and we've continued this. We have a public hearing scheduled for June 13th at 6:50 p.m. So I would ask for further time on this as well, Mr. President, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza?
I'm okay with further time.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant further time to 48-22. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 48-22 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 48-22 has been given further time. Moving on to 49-22.
49-22, Mr. President. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the ordinance pertaining to solar. Article 3, Table of Use, Section 22-104 of zoning, per attached letter. As you recall, we had a public hearing this evening. Ms. Wood came before us and testified about the need for this ordinance to be in place so that we have the ability to regulate solar projects that are in the best interest of the City of Leamester. So it would be my recommendation to grant 49-22, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay, so you're looking to grant. Counselor Badanza?
Yeah, I'm fine with those script errors corrected that the Chairman pointed out during the public hearing. I'm in favor.
Okay, and Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 49-22. Is there any further discussion? Should we do a roll call? Counselor Frida? Sorry, go ahead.
If there's questions on it by a counsel, why wouldn't we do that for the time as well? We gave a further time to the, to another one that's been here since June of 2021. And that's been kicking around forever. So I mean, if somebody's got legitimate question, and, I mean, obviously, it's important enough to, to, if that's a correct term by, I'm going to guess, is by Elizabeth, if there was a joint subcommittee, and I'm not so sure you, that's proper procedure to call a joint subcommittee, but, I mean, if there's a question, why wouldn't you just carry it to the next meeting at this point?
First of all, I, I have absolutely, Counselor, I have absolutely no control over what she chooses to call it. Again, I brought up the fact that Counselor, that, remember, the Planning Board before this council had meant, had made some recommendations about solar and the need to firm that up. And I would say simply that, again, the Planning Board sent us a six to nothing recommendation to grant it. You've heard Ms. Wood, if we had an application that comes across, they're going to have to rely on the existing zoning, which isn't as, as strong as the language in this one that's proposed. So I would, I mean, I understand, but I, if someone shared with me what they think we would gain by further timing, that's giving us more time. I'm just curious.
Okay. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Well, first of all, the Fire Department hasn't weighed in yet, right? I think their referral is still outstanding, and there's reference to the Fire Department in here that they have to, where's my notes? There's a specific change in the ordinance that references a plan that has to be approved, I think, by the Fire Department.
Yeah, on the road, on the, on the road.
Is it on the road? I had it, I'd had it just a minute ago, because I noticed that, that was a concern. So I'd like to know what they say, what they, what they think. Where is it? I think it's on page two. It looks like E, number four, letter E, "A Plan for Provision of Water Needed for Fire Protection As Well As Other Fire Control Measures Approved by the Fire Department." I don't know if they would want to add anything to that or change that or, you know, beef that up in any way, but we still do have an outstanding referral from the Fire Department.
Yeah, we do. So I, I mean, I guess they'd make him either put in a fire hydrant or a cauldron to, to some type of catchment device to have water available on site. But I'm, I'm not concerned about, if we're, if we're going to waive conservation referrals and other, on other matters that were before us tonight, I don't have a problem with, with waiving that one on solar petition. That's just my personal belief, so.
Counselor Badanza?
There's another point here, too, is, like I said, you know, to the, to Ms. Wood, this has been kicking around for a long time. This has got to go through two readings after tonight. If the Fire Department has a real issue with that, they can come, they can get back to us and let us know about it before we approve it. So I'd like to move this thing along.
Okay. Counselor Cormier?
And to that point as well, is, when you read that, that subdivision, "A Plan for Provision of Water Needed for Fire Protection As Well As Other Fire Control Measures Approved by the Fire Department." So the Fire Department, I don't know what they could possibly add to that. They're going to have to approve whatever, whatever that plan is. So they're going to have the last say on this no matter what. I don't know what they would add to that because they're, they're going to get the last say on it. If it doesn't meet their approval, then the petition doesn't go forward, the, the application doesn't go forward. So that's just my point. As I said earlier, I've, I've read through this, and I've read through it each time, believe it or not, that it's come before us. I just, I think it, I don't want to go back and re, try to reinvent the wheel and go through every single part of this petition as we have it. The ordinance as it's written up is actually more restrictive. Much of it is boilerplate language. It's language that's been adopted in other communities. I, I think we've taken special care to protect the City of Leamester itself and in the city's interests, and, and I have the same fear that I want something in place. If the applications are coming in, I don't want them relying on the old ordinance. We have it in front of us. I think it's ready to go. And as the council put out, you know, there's two more readings. If there's seriously something else that comes up, I think it can be addressed during those times, and that's why I support going forward with it tonight.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Frida?
Through the chair, maybe to the counselor across from me. If I recall, and I could be wrong, but if we have something in place and that we have it on our agenda and we're having a discussion, it's a public hearing, and it's already been discussed, then that protects the city, even though it's not accepted yet.
You're referring to a zoning freeze on the Chapter 48, which is for buildings. I'm not sure that would apply here.
Not just that. I think other, other as well.
I have to look at that statute carefully, but I would suggest no.
It was the same thing with the cannabis issue, the marijuana issue. That was the same thing. There were a lot of them that, once we started the process, we were covered. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing one way or the other. I'm just saying that that's what I recall in the past, and as long as we were dealing with it. If you didn't have anything in place, you didn't have anything in place, and you're not protected. But if you're talking about it, then, then I think, I believe we might be, I don't know if the clerk knows anything about that, but, I mean, I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot, but.
I'd have to look into it further to be 100% sure. I wouldn't want to say.
I know we've done it a couple of times. I just don't recall which.
If it was a building, that, for sure, because that's a zoning freeze. But that, the zoning freeze is very specific, very particular. As you know, the zoning law is, you know, got a lot of ins and outs to it. I don't suggest that this, I wouldn't be comfortable with suggesting that we have a freeze because there's a petition pending before us.
I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying, we're, we're saying that we're not protected.
Well, we may not be.
And I, I think that needs to be clarified. Either we're not, we are or we're not, if we're basing decisions on that.
Well, that's, that's not, I mean, I won't speak for other councils, but that's not the basis of, that's my, that's not my only basis of my decision, but it is part of it, and I, I don't want to take the chance.
I mean, not to go back to, to 20-22, that's been there a year. Why is that so kicking around? Is there a major issue with that? Why?
I think that's back with the, isn't that back with the Planning Board?
Yeah, they've, they've set up, they've got a member of the community, they've been meeting to, to change, they may change that dramatically by the time we see it again. So.
Okay. 49-22. Any further discussion? Okay, so I believe we have a recommendation on the floor, still stands to grant 49-22. If there is no further discussion, we'll do this in a roll call vote. This does take two-thirds vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Angellini?
Yea.
Counselor Brady?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Deacon?
Yea.
Counselor Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. 49-22 has been granted, and Madam Clerk, if you can work on us, making sure that we do, along with the Chair, that we do get those recommendations so that we can make sure we're on solid, on solid ground to move on with the first and second reading. That'd be great. Thank you very much. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, we have already dealt with the appointments. We do have some reappointments. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Mr. President, the, we have to vote on these individually, correct? Okay. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of Joseph Tossi, 334 Hill Street, Leamester, Mass. to the Board of Appeals, term to expire April 15th, 2025. It would be my recommendation that we grant the reappointment of Mr. Tossi, and I'd ask you to confer with the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant the reappointment for Joseph Tossi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting this appointment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Joseph Tossi has been reappointed to the Board of Appeals. Moving on to the next one.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of Nicholas Previll, 127 Spruce Street, Leamester, to the Board of Appeals as an alternate member, term to expire April 15th, 2023. It would be my position to grant this reappointment, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Is, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the reappointment of Nicholas Previll to the Board of Appeals. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting this appointment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Nicholas Previll has been reappointed to the Board of Appeals. Moving on to the third one.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of Richard Don Darrow, 691 Lancaster Street, Leamester, to the Board of Assessors, term to expire April 15th, 2025. It would be my recommendation that we grant this reappointment, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the reappointment of Richard Don Darrow to the Board of Assessors. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Mr. Don Darrow has been reappointed to the Board of Assessors. Moving on to the fourth reappointment.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of Martin Turbide, 99 Scenic Drive, Leamester, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. It would be my recommendation that we reappoint Mr. Turbide, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant the reappointment of Martin Turbide to the Disability Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting this appointment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Martin Turbide has been reappointed to the Disability Commission. Moving on to the fifth appointment on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of Gail Turbide, 99 Scenic Drive, Leamester, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. It would be my recommendation that we reappoint Mrs. Turbide, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to reappoint Gail Turbide to the Disability Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the reappointment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Gail Turbide has been reappointed to the Disability Commission. Moving on to the sixth and final reappointment of the evening, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of James Despo to Helena Street, Leamester, to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15th, 2025. It would be my recommendation that we reappoint Mr. Despo, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the reappointment of James Despo to the Library Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting this reappointment, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, James Despo has been reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Moving on to 59, I'm sorry, 52-22. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. 52-22. Vincent Ciccolini, on behalf of Sterling Jewelers Incorporated, doing business as Ake Jewelers Number 1285, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 100 Commercial Road. Mr. President, all referrals are in. I can tell you that they have completed their application. They've submitted a letter in good standing by both the Treasurer's Office for the City of Leamester and the Leamester Police Department. They've also provided their proof of insurance, and I find everything to be in good order. It would be my recommendation that we renew the license, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counsel Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting fifty-two dash twenty-two signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, fifty-two dash twenty-two has been granted. Moving on to items under new business. We do have one first reading of an ordinance, which is formerly the petition C-69. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C-69 is Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request the following section of the city of Leamester revise ordinance, chapter sixteen, personnel. Article two, personnel, wage and salary plan, division three, classification plan, section-- excuse me, sixteen dash thirty-four, classification of positions be amended effective immediately to replace the existing classification with a new classification plan presented below. Class and title, assistant purchasing agent, classification S five, and inserting in their place the following. Class, title, assistant purchasing agent, classification S seven. And I have the ordinance in its pure form in the year 2022, an ordinance be or dame by the city council, city of Leamester, as follows. Chapter sixteen, section sixteen dash thirty-four of the revised ordinance, entitled "Classification of Positions," is hereby amended by deleting the classification for the following position. And again, class, title is assistant purchasing agent, classification is S five, and inserting in its place the following. Class, title, assistant purchasing agent, classification S seven. It would be my recommendation that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counsel Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, which is formerly C-69. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Ardinger?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Brady?
Yea.
Counsel Shafu Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Deacon?
Yea.
Counsel Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. See-- I'm sorry, the first reading of an ordinance on former petition C dash-- C-69 has been granted. Moving on to items under new business, Counselor--
Please move.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I made a mistake earlier, and I looked it up for the budget vote. It is actually under general law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-two, a majority vote, and we have been doing it as a two-thirds in the past, but I did look it up to verify. Counselor Badanza was right, it's majority, so we'll be changing that. So I apologize for that error.
I thought I was losing my mind. I did notice for the first time, I've not seen a budget yet that has relied on, other than the fiscal year revenues. This budget relies on two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, not a lot of money, but other than fiscal twenty-three revenues, they're transferring it, looks like some surplus money from Gallagher Building, and I was wondering if that was the reason, so it threw me off. Otherwise, I would have stood my ground.
Okay. Counsel Frida, I think I saw your hand for new business.
I do, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask, as a member of the Committee on Schools, I would like to ask, and I think it's Counsel Brady, is the chair, to set up a meeting with the superintendent and maybe members of the school committee or the mayor, and the principals of CTEI. I don't know how many people might have read U.S. News and World Report. It was a very disturbing article, and I'm hoping there's an explanation to it, that CTEI was listed as one of the fortieth, forty worst schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And out of seventeen thousand some odd throughout the country, they ranked thirteen thousand. I'm hoping that the criteria used, or however they did there, it was pretty specific on the math and English and graduation rates. So if all those are actual numbers, I just think, looking at the mayor's letter in his budget, presenting the budget, he states that he wants all kids to come back from COVID and to be able to function properly. And if we need some extra money in CTEI, then I think we need to get some answers for that. So through the chair, I'll ask that we have that-- have that subcommittee meeting, a joint meeting, however we do it.
Sure. Counsel Brady?
It sounds very reasonable to me. Having worked at vocational educational institutions, some of the criteria could be systematically set up against vocational kids. It could be based on college acceptance, a lot of different things, but it's a great idea to ask them to come down and let's have a discussion, because let's face it, if there's any time to infuse some money into anything, now's the time.
I mean, I'm hoping that the criteria is subject.
Well, you know, I have some experience, because I'm on an advisory board up there with culinary arts. There's a lot of dedicated teachers. So, yeah, let's get to the bottom of it.
So Counsel Brady, if you want to work with the city clerk, and, you know, she can get that established, to post a public meeting as needed, and we'll certainly have a nice meeting with them, and it's been a while anyway, so it's good to meet with them and get kind of a synopsis of what's going on. Thank you very much for that.
We'll see what kind of schedule we can get with the wrapping up of the school year.
Yeah, right before-- yeah, before--
Anyone have any input into the superintendent?
It's possible that we'll be pretty free come June, because we got an early budget, so maybe we can do it, you know, right at the beginning of June before everybody dismisses themselves for the summer, which would be good, which would be perfect. Okay, Counsel Shafu Zephyr?
This is old business. Are we moved on?
I think so. We good with new business? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. C-77 is a request by the mayor for an appropriation of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for street resurfacing expense and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the sidewalk expense account, all coming from free cash. And then as part of the information that we got, there is a total of 3.1 million for new paving money. So he's looking for money out of free cash, and then he's got all of this other federal money. Chapter ninety money, ARPA funds, and WRAP. I'm not sure what that acronym stands for, W R A P, paving, which is state funds. So what I would like for the next meeting, before we vote on this, is an outline or a list of the sidewalks that are going to be made with all this money, as well as a list of the streets that are going to be paved.
Okay, I will talk to the mayor's office and the comptroller about that. That communication will also be on the agenda of the subcommittee meeting on the nineteenth, after we're done with the departments. So hopefully, I'll have the information for that subcommittee meeting.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other old business? Seeing none, is there anything that come into the community calendar?
Celtics.
Seeing none. What's that?
Celtics.
Celtics, yeah. Certainly not the Red Sox. Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Cormier and Counsel Ardinger, I very quickly saw your hand for a second. All those in favor of adjourning signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.